I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order and have roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Stout.
Here, thank you.
Thank you. We have one item for the work session, which is everybody's favorite topic, Master Fees and Charges Update with Jeff Pascal.
We'll get to that. It's coming up. Thank you. So yes, tonight, we're here to review the Master Fees and Charges schedule. It's an annual review. First, I want to extend my thanks to Tatiana Victina. She is the Community Development Budget Manager, and she actually did all of the heavy lifting, pulling all of these numbers together, all of these pages, and all of the material that we're going to be discussing tonight. Along with, since these fees cover several departments, there are staff in each of those departments that review their fees and provide that information to her as well. So I really want to extend my thanks to all of them for getting all of this material together and prepared for you. So here we are. We're going to get. There we go. All right. So tonight, we're going to give a little background. Then we'll cover the proposed changes, kind of the rationale that we put to creating this proposal for you, and then just show you some impact numbers. One thing is, is this is the review. In the past, we have, when I looked back historically, when others had brought, I think it was Finance who brought this. There were actually two work sessions before we came with the works or with the public hearing. And one of those was to get direction on the increase or what numbers to use. This year, what I want to say is this is a proposal, and so this is the opportunity for the council to review that proposal. So we've provided, based on guidance that we have received from the council in the past, we have provided you kind of two little, two options or options on what that, those CPI or those cost increases look like, based on the type of fee. And each fee has been reviewed, like I said, by the staff who administer those programs. So background, the council is responsible for approving, updating, giving guidance on the fees. The fees are a critical revenue source for, obviously, services that the city provides across the board. Across the city, you can see on the slide, the full list of different departments, different programs that do, that these fees affect or that they, that are, these fees are for. And then one of our goals is committed, we're committed to maintaining fair balance and reasonable fee structure. So that's why we thoughtfully look at each fee. We think about the guidance that we've received from the council in the past before we bring a proposal before you. And one thing is, is if you go back a long time and time, we've, in order to consolidate this, I think each department used to bring their fee proposal individually. Now, that's why you see one large list and before you, and that's what we're here for, is to look at it, and it's just to create some efficiency and save some time with the council. So as I mentioned, the fees were part of, based on, the fee update is based on guidance that we have received from the council in the past. You'll see two different escalators. This Consumer Price Index that the council has given guidance before, and that was the Bureau of Labor Consumer Price Index for cities our size. And then also in the past, for those fees that are really driven by labor, as an example, our planning, our land use applications, which are really staff-driven, that's where the costs are derived. Trying to attain that cost of recovery, and that's where looking at our labor rate. Our labor rate, based on the last compensation, is 5.5%, and that's what's in the FY26 budget. So that's why you'll see two different escalators. Proposed changes reflect those two primary escalators. Again, the 5.5% increase is what we're experiencing based on our compensation for staff in the current, in the proposed budget, and then the 2.4% is materials and services. It is important to note that each fee is reviewed individually, so the staff who administer those programs look at the different fees. So you'll note that some fees didn't change at all, and that's based on the staff's guidance for what they do. So maybe the CPI doesn't affect those fees or materials and services or things like that, so it's not appropriate to raise those fees. Sometimes the, when you, some of the fees are so small, when you apply the escalator, it just doesn't make sense, because we try to round the fees to the nearest whole dollar. So it's like, when do you pick up? And sometimes we'll do, much like we did with the planning fees. Sometimes you'll go through and do a truing up to see where you're at with what the service costs. Each of the fees is organized in attachment two, which is the fee schedule. One thing I'd like to say about the fee schedule, and input on this is really welcome, is we're trying to, much like you saw with the planning fees, kind of organize it so it's easy to see what the fee is and then try and, rather than where we had in some cases, where we had a descriptor and the fees kind of built into this long paragraph, and you're trying to figure out what you're really paying. It's like we have an expl- we're working towards having an explanation for the fee, and then here's your table that lists the fee, so it's really easy, hopefully easy, to go see what it costs for what service. I would say it's not perfect yet, but we're, that's our goal is, with working with Tatiana, that's our goal is to work towards that, to where we're trying to be a little more clear and transparent about what the fees are and make it easier to find. As I said, we'll talk about, a little bit about impact. This is just to give idea of what the impact is. So this, when you look at the revenue, this is the revenue generated by, for each of those funds by those fees. So that's not the revenue for the, the total revenue for the fund. This is just revenue generated by fees. And so then you can see what the impact is based on changing the fee calculation by 1% on what that would be to that revenue. So. With that, open for discussion and questions.
Discussions or questions? I worked my way over to you. Go ahead, Counselor Rodley.
I just have sort of overall, and you started to mention it, so then I can just say more about that. I really appreciate all the tables and how simplified it is. I completely agree with that. I was like, oh my gosh, this is so interesting and so easy to see. And not to get down in the weeds of it, but then I appreciated seeing here's exactly what that percentage increase would be. I was like particularly looking, which is not in your bailiwick, but looking at like the court fees and seeing that those weren't going up too much, which I appreciated. So I just, I appreciate the continued work to simplify it and to make it more accessible. So thank you.
So what are the next steps here? So once we head nod that this is the fee structure that we want, does this come directly to a public hearing? How do we, how do we go forward from here?
Yes, we're scheduled for a public hearing. So based on guidance, so if there's any specific guidance on changes you want to see on the proposal, we'll go back, work on that, and then that will be coming back before the council June 2nd for a public hearing.
So the, I had a couple of questions on, on fees. If you look at Attachment Two, it's page eight of 66. When I look across those general fees, there's just a lot of, right, we're raising it 9.85, $5.08, and it seemed inconsistent with the remainder, remainder of the fees, where we were trying to at least get to some, some sense of, I don't know, like a, something that's not so precise. Let's put it that way.
A whole dollar? So we could go back and we could look at those that come back if that's the round down, round up, but most likely I could say, we could just say round down to the nearest whole dollar. If that's, those are for, I think those are mostly business license, operator fees, licenses like that. So if that's the guidance the council wants to give, we can easily do that.
I would be open to you evaluating them as far as administrative feasibility, right? I'm not going to tell you so precisely as how you run them all down to the whole dollar. Just look at them across and do some sort of sense check with them, Counselor Rodley.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, when I look at them, because there's some, they're like 9.85, and I'm like, let's go up and not down. So yeah, just that. You covered it.
The second question about the, the general fees, and I'm sure we ask this every single year. There are fees in there, and then I'm like, do we even issue a circus and carnival license for the year?
I don't know. No. So we probably do have several fees where we're not experiencing that anymore, that situation. So I will say, if we got rid of it, we would probably suddenly get an application. That's the way the world works.
Fair point. We would add it to our summer, summer activity list. And then if we could go down to the fire and emergency fee, and when I look at the transport ones, which is a, a fund that we historically have challenges with, right? It looks like you just added the, the 5.5% accelerator across the, the train, just directly to the transport funds. Does that really align with what our cost recovery is? Because 5.5% is specific, on average, generally to the, to the city, and I know that, like, it could vary by department.
That, that's a great question. I would have to get, I can get that information back to you, since there isn't, I don't see a fire represented. It's airless. If somebody wants to speak to that. I did tell them that I wasn't going to try and answer fees about their programs or answer questions about their fees, but I can get that question back to you, because you are correct. I think our, the 5.5 is based on the SEIU non-representative compensation, not necessarily to fire, and so finding out what specifically goes into that fee, we can find that information out.
Yeah, and I think this, I think these fees look tight enough, they're ready to go to a public hearing. I think it's just more information. The other question that I had for them was, and was, do we, do we have to true that up with the city of Eugene, right? So that, that we're effectively charging the same fee?
Okay.
And yeah, either way, I'm good, but I think it's just one of those places where we want to pull on that a little bit more.
I can make sure that by June 2nd, when we have the public hearing, I can have that kind of information for you.
It feels like you have weeks.
I know. It feels like that, but.
Anybody else or stout?
So I mean, one of the things that caught my interest was the Vietnamese pig licensing fee, and, and I don't necessarily want to go too deep into that, knowing that there's several permutations of whether it's citizen-neutered or non, those, those have different rates on there. I, I, I'm saying that a little bit tongue-in-cheek to say, in your experience with the different departments, as they've been processing their own fee, what would you say is a way that, you know, when they address their fees, they're trying to make it easier to do business, to do the permitting with the city of Springfield? Is that a common kind of trope in most of our, our staff's minds? Is how can I make this easier for the citizen to make an addition to a house? You know, build something new there, you know, license something properly? I'd rather things be so easy that, of course, it makes sense to pay the fee as opposed to not pay the fee, and it's great that we have things as specific as a Vietnamese pig. But I'm just kind of curious, what are you seeing as far as just the overall approach of this? How can I make this easier to do business with the city of Springfield and to get everything, you know, nice and tidy?
I would say generally, and I can't speak for the other departments, I can just speak for CMD and some of the DPW fees, but we have that conversation when we talk about planning fees. How are we trying to clarify, make them clear, easily to under, easier to understand? And you can kind of see that theme. That's one thing Tatiana worked on when she got this, was how can we kind of simplify and make them look similar, at least the tables? Like I said, it's not 100% there. There's some fees, the way the calculations run, that we have to go back and make sure we're not going to lose something. But I will say that we're, I would say, at least within CMD and DPW, we're always having that conversation about, what are we doing? How can we make it more clear? Because sometimes even if it's, even, it's not even certain, super clear to staff all the time, or it's, you know, if you're reading the language, it's just not easy to understand. And so always asking that question that, how are we trying to simplify or make it easy to understand? So it is easy to do business with the city, especially when you, when you think about customers coming into our front counter and asking questions, how can we answer those questions? Those general questions easier at the, at the counter?
I, I love that. And then how would you say, like, enforcement on some of these code issues comes through? Especially when there's somewhat, kind of, I mean, odd. The Vietnamese pig is a great example. Like, okay, my neighbor's got a Vietnamese pig. How do I make sure that, you know, is it a complaint-driven system? Are we saying, you know, I think he's got an unlicensed Vietnamese pig next door, and it's, I don't know if he paid the right fee on that. I, I'm just wondering if, can you just teach me a little, a little background on, how do we do enforcement on this in a way that really makes sense for the city? That invites people's cooperation to this?
I can speak to how we operate code enforcement, and maybe the Vietnamese pig or that falls under animal, you know, under purview of police. But for code enforcement, like building or in the right of way, that sort of thing, we typically are complaint-driven. However, I can say, if I'm the city engineer and I'm going out, and this has happened to me, I notice something that is not correct. I have to stop. I have to address it. It's because it's a safety issue, especially if it's a safety issue. If it's traffic control that isn't set up correctly. The, the one that I can recall most recently is I'm driving by and somebody just puts a barricade up in an ADA ramp and says ADA ramp closed, right? I can't drive by and let that go. So. But for the most part, with citizens, we are complaint-based. And so as you probably recall through the ACP, the, that we just, that conversation we just had in updating the code enforcement, our, our goal is really education first. That's what we're trying to gain compliance through education, and really that those fines and penalties are there when we can't gain that. And so it's similar to trying to get people to do business the correct way or their, you know, license things the correct way, build things the correct way. And really, because we don't want to have to go out and, and write citations. We'd rather have people gain cooperative enforcement.
Before we go to Counselor Doyle, I just want to point out, this is where compliance gets really hard. You literally could drive by and let it go, right? The right thing to do is to take, take 30 seconds and, or, you know, whatever time is, and to address safety things in the city, and I know that that's something that, you know, your team does all the time, and I appreciate it. Counselor Doyle?
Thank you. I wanted to talk to you just a little bit about the historic fees. So it looks like you're, are they going to go to an actual cost?
Yeah, so they used to be heavily discounted.
Heavily, like you're going from $80 to $2,000.
And so that was, and, and we've had some recent experience with that, and that was one thing Mark Rust, our man, planning, current planning manager, brought up when we had the council adopt the fees in December. That was like the first thing that we're like, we got to correct that, and so that's what we're doing. So by going to an actual cost of service, if somebody's doing a big review, they're going to pay for what it costs. If they're just replacing a window, it's just going to be whatever that 30 minutes or whatever it takes for that review to make sure that their plan is correct.
Excellent. I just, it, it looked like it was showing the increase on the, the sheet, and I wanted to make sure. So is that only with type one, or is that going to be type, just type one? So type two and type three are still going to be at the larger, the 3,000 and 5,000?
Yes.
So then, does it really seem reasonable that we just enacted that fee, and then now we're going up another 5.5%? I mean, it went up like 800%, and now we're going to tack on another 5.5%?
Yeah, Counselor Doyle, I, I think our fees were based on the 2024 numbers that we had for the budget. So when we brought those in December, was the best information we had, or now the FY25. So the new fees were, are going to be based on the FY26, and we had that discussion. And had the discussion about increasing fees gone on longer, we would have probably gone back and revised our numbers to reflect the current, you know, this current budget proposal for FY26. So that's where we are, because we had gone for two years without increasing our fees. And so that, that's where we landed, was we're right sizing it with the budget. Now, could we take a pass this year? Yeah, potentially, but then it may affect revenue in the general.
Yeah, and so I'm, I'm okay with the, the fee increase, the 5.5%. That's not, it's these particular fees on the historic, because they were so, they were increased so much, like, we're not talking about, you know, even, even a large amount. We're talking like an enormous amount. And so to see in less than a year and a half, we're now adding another 3 and 5, 5.5% seems like we, do we really need to do that at this point when we're, maybe we might want to actually see if we're getting any people that are even willing to, to get those permits at this point, so at that cost difference, so.
That, that's fair, and I, I think since the councils, previous councils have chosen to heavily discount that fee, I mean, that could be guidance that the council gives us is to just leave that fee as is for this year, the historic fee. Because you're right, you're correct. Those fees did go up quite a bit.
Yeah, so that would be my, my one little recommendation, if we could.
I think we're probably all in favor to just taking a look at that one, you know, as we continue to, you know, sharpen our pencils with this process. Other than Counselor Rodley.
Well, I don't know.
I was looking for a nod.
I just would be curious as to what, and I wasn't here historically, as to why they were so heavily discounted, and if indeed that need still exists, because maybe it was to incentivize folks to do development in the Washburn or wherever. And so it could be that the need isn't there, so maybe it's, there's a, there's a happy medium. So I'm just curious as to the why.
I, I think what it is, is really it's not development so much, but if somebody comes in, just as a simple example, and they want to replace their windows, a homeowner who doesn't live in the, in the historic district does not need a permit, any permit to replace their windows. But if you live in the historic district, an obligation is you have, even if you're not a contributing home building, you still have to have a historic review to get approval for the materials you're using.
Yeah, it's not normal windows either.
Yeah, and so, and they aren't. I mean, you have to, if you're contributing, there's, there's a lot of factors. So I think that's why there was the heavily, heavily discounted rate, because they were obligated to come in for review, whereas another homeowner somewhere else in the city could kind of do, they can replace siding with, you can replace siding without a permit. You can't in the historic district. So I think it was just that recognition that by choosing to live in the historic district, you have other obligations with how you maintain your home and the type of materials you use.
Can I ask a follow-up? Because when I hear, when I hear that, I think, okay, if this is the only place that those are being required, and then I hear heavily discounted, it's like heavily discounted from what? Like, what's the baseline that it's being heavily discounted from? Because, yeah, but it sounds like there was a, you know, initially a fee that somebody came up with. I'm like, compared to, are we discounting it compared to, like nearby, could be historical districts? Or like, do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I think it's based on what our other typical type two and type three reviews are and what that staff time that goes into it. I don't know that there was a comparison historically to other cities or other historic districts. I think it really was, this is the type of application it is. So here's what a similar application for other work, if you're building something is. Versus if, you know, versus if you're just replacing something, that person wouldn't have to come in for a type one application, or if they were replacing, so I wouldn't have to come in for a type two application. They could just do it. And so, but when you look at other type two applications, I think that's where the fee, you know, rather than having a specific type two application for the historic district, it's just a general application across the city, and so discounting it if it's in the historic district for that activity.
All right. Anybody else? Do you have enough feedback?
I do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We are adjourned till 7 o'clock when we were in the JEO meeting. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to, I'll call the Springfield City Council regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Stout.
Here, thank you.
I'd like to open the Lane County Commissioners' regular session, then call for roll call from our commissioners. My, my name's Commissioner Lovell.
Push that and go.
Pat Farr, Board of County Commissioners.
Are we just announcing ourselves? Because if so, Commissioner Heather Buck.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Lane County Commissioner Lori Trigger.
We have Commissioner Ryan Sennigan excused absent tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go further tonight, I just want to note, I see a couple of folks in the crowd that are waiting for another item. This is a special joint elected officials meeting, so we will get to our regular, regular session as soon as this wraps up. So that, at that point, we'll take public testimony and do the items that you were here for. Tonight, we continue a public hearing open on April 21st on the matter of adopting amendments to the Springfield Development Code for text amendments to the Campus Industrial District in the definition section. The Springfield City Council is meeting jointly with the Lane County Board of Commissioner, of county commissioners, because this item requires joint adoption. As we begin our meeting tonight, there's a designated time for public testimony for the public hearing. If you're attending in person, please complete the right request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer, and wish to speak during the public hearing, please raise your hand in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in that person in the council chambers, and then anyone who's raised their virtual hand and, raised their virtual hand. I'm going to open the public hearing on an ordinance amending sections, amending sections 3.200, .400, and 1.61, .110 of the Springfield Development Code, adopting a savings clause and severability clause and providing an effective date.
This is the third reading and continued public hearing on ordinance 2503 in the matter of amending Lane Code 10.600-15 to co-adopt amendments to the Springfield Development Codes, Campus Industrial District, Sections 3.2, .400, and 6.1, .110, and adopting a savings and severability clause and providing an effective date. I hereby open the public hearing.
Okay, so we're going to go around for, as, as the Springfield City Council, and declare potential or actual conflicts of interest. We will start down with Counselor Blackwell, and then the county commission will do their side.
No potential or actual conflicts.
No potential or actual conflict of interest.
With an abundance of caution, I would like to declare a potential conflict of interest as a property owner in the Gateway area.
I have no potential or actual conflicts of interest.
No potential or actual conflicts of interest.
I too have no potential or actual conflicts of interest.
No potential or actual conflicts of interest.
I'll call now call for any disclosures of any Board of County Commissioners, abstentions due to conflicts of interest or biases, and I'll call in order for this declaration. Commissioner Heather Buck.
Hi there. I think you skipped us online for the prior round, and so I just wanted to make sure I stated a potential conflict of interest for owning property in Springfield, but I don't think it's an actual conflict of interest.
Yeah, this is what we're doing now. Thank you. Commissioner Trigger.
I have no actual or potential conflicts of interest to declare, nor any bias.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Farr.
I have none.
Thank you, and I would like to do a potential conflict of interest, and I own multiple properties in downtown Springfield, but have no conflicts or interests or biases toward this item.
Please have the staff summary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, counselors. I would note that there was some written testimony that we received just prior to the meeting. Copies have been distributed to the, those in attendance tonight, and hopefully also digitally to commissioners that are attending us remotely. The summary of the testimony is restated support from Michael Reader on behalf of Peace Health. Their support extends to the specific development code text amendments that would allow for medical clinics, outpatient care, physicians' offices, and other types of uses within the Campus Industrial District. It does not extend to uses such as hospitals, urgent care clinics, birthing centers, other types of hospital-related and more medical services-oriented uses. So I wanted to make that very clear. I wanted to summarize a couple of the issues that have been brought forward. Firstly, respondents had questioned why this site was not zone general commercial in some of the testimony that you've seen. The reason for that is staff had discouraged any type of action to open up general commercial, such as community commercial zoning, because it would have the effect of introducing potentially uses that could be deleterious or adverse to the Campus Industrial District. Use car lots, mini storage facilities, fast food restaurants, gas stations, all these types of uses that could generate traffic, could generate 24-hour activity on the site, and open up to any one of a number of uses associated with, for example, Main Street or the rest of the Gateway Commercial Area. Staff discouraged the applicant from pursuing that route. Secondarily, the question was raised, why not medical services? If they're looking for medical services-type uses, redesignate and rezone the property to medical services. The Hawes Financial Group not being medical in nature, and their other tenants not being medical in nature, did not wish did not wish to essentially evict all of the existing tenants in the building in order to try to bring back some of the types of uses that they're looking for to supplement or to fill out the tenancy within the building. So therefore, the medical services zoning was not something that was being sought. Questions were raised about impacts to transportation facilities. Staff has provided in the staff report confirmation that only a portion of the overall Campus Industrial zoning has actually been built. Some of it is not even active. The question about demand for services, again, not all of the facilities have been built. We have seen a demand for emergency services spike when buildings shutter. Pacific Source, or sorry, not Pacific Source, Royal Caribbean being an example. As soon as a building was shuttered and the security left the site, there were problems almost instantly. And unfortunately, that's led to, I guess, an ongoing presence on the site in order to deter trespass, vandalism, and that sort of thing. So it's clear that services are available, services can be provided, and unfortunately, they're needed mostly when the buildings become vacated. And clearly, the applicant does not wish for that to happen in their building. Finally, the applicant did provide a transportation analysis. It looked at reasonable most traffic generative uses on the site, and concluded that this type of rezoning and change of development code text would not have an adverse impact on the existing transportation facilities, any of the intersections nearby. It would not cause an impact to the public transportation system. There is a robust transportation system in that area with a bus rapid transit, multiple stops along the area. There are bike lanes, there are walking paths, multipurpose paths. And unfortunately, most of the available parking is often unused and utilized for things like concerts at Austin Stadium. So there's, you know, a surplus of parking in the area. Hopefully, at some point, there will be full capacity of the Campus Industrial District generating more employment opportunities, more jobs for Springfield and the area. And that's the intent of this code amendment that's being presented tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Just wanted to summarize, some of the key points that have been raised during testimony and have been addressed by both the applicant and staff in your packet this evening.
Are there any questions from the council? Counselor Weber.
Thank you, actually, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. First, Andy, I want to just say thank you for all the work you've done in trying to make this last packet a little more easy to digest. There's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, and I just really appreciate.
Tried to reorganize to bring the, the important parts to the top.
Yeah, yeah, I really appreciate that effort, thank you. So I viewed a few, well, all of the, or the Planning Commission meetings regarding this topic, and they recommended we adopt the code amendments. But there was a conversation during one of those meetings about whether or not there's a mechanism to accommodate the applicant's request specific to that location. And I couldn't find the response, and I just thought it might be helpful to, to just know if there are any, you know, mechanisms that we could use to just give the applicant what they need in this timeframe, but allowing the council to have a future conversation about the vision for North Gateway without necessarily setting a precedence or not locking us in, but kind of just making it look like this is what we want for the Gateway area without having actually had a conversation about it.
The cake can eat it two claws. Unfortunately, there really isn't anything like that. The, the Planning Commission, through both the applicant and, and dealing with the respondents there in their back and forth, tried to make it as concise and as surgical as possible. One of the suggestions was to limit business hours, but that's unlike any other district in the city where the city would be responsible for regulating businesses, which is really not what, we don't have the staff for it. It's really not our wherewithal to do that unless it's some type of nuisance situation, in which case either code enforcement or the police would be called. The other thing, I think this may have gone a little overlooked in all of this, is that there is a pre-certification process for all campus industrial uses. So before anything ever gets approved or built, an applicant has to come in and, and basically posit or offer what they're proposing on a site, and it has to be reviewed and determined that it is allowable on the site in Campus Industrial District, which is different than a lot of other sites where, you know, it's more general and flexible in nature. So it's, has an added layer of kind of scrutiny to this site and, and this zoning district. And I think that's, you know, in, in its entirety, a way to ensure that there aren't uses that suddenly appear overnight that no one was expecting. And certainly, council can monitor the situation, and if necessary, if there is some type of adverse impacts not foreseen, it could be revisited in the future, and there could be other changes made to the code as well.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand that, because I think that answers my second question, too. So any future developments, whether it be a manufacturing company or a clinic or a medical health treatment facility, would have to go through some sort of a process with the city. It wouldn't just be automatically.
In the, in the Campus Industrial District, that's correct, yes.
Under the city's code, there are definitely other, you know, state processes that could supersede the cities or take the city's authority away. So I'm not talking about those examples. Right. In the context of the development code and the comprehensive plan, only, this is only allowing those businesses, those changes to business parks. I want to go back and supplement Andy's response a little bit. Everything he said is 100% accurate. There are other code mechanisms that could allow you to look to each property, but those, so other types of code changes, other than just expanding the uses of a lot of business parks, you could make these additional uses in business parks, like discretionary uses, which require a hearing with the Planning Commission. That would give you more site-by-site control over what uses are allowed, but it would add to the cost for the Haas, the Haas business to get each of those uses approved. And that would undercut their purpose in offering amendments. So what staff did in, in talking about the, the site-specific plan amendments and changes, the other thing that can be site-by-site, I think Andy did a great job of explaining why that's not a good fit here for the zoning districts that Springfield has available. The site-by-site, you know, just legislating for one specific business park to allow certain uses, but for no other business park to allow those uses, has some equal protection issues, where we can't draw a reasonable basis to allow them for one property and not for the other. But allowing, constraining this to business parks is as close to that just for this one site and for no others as we can get, given that there are only two business parks. And our market analysis indicates there's not likely to be a proliferation of other business parks because they are so hard to get tenants, which is exactly the reason that the applicants came in for these amendments. There's really not likely to be, in the very near future, a lot of people wanting to go out and develop new business parks. And if the city, if the, if planning does see a lot more of these coming in all at once, then that's definitely something that can be brought forward to the council and can look at options there. Okay, great, thank you.
I see a hand up from our county council, Mr. Rob Bovette, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Lovell, and Mayor Van Gordon. I wonder if we could allow Amber Bell to be elevated to a panelist rather than in the waiting room. She is actually our planning director. I'm not sure she has any additional staff comments, but it would be good to get her in the panelist's room here.
Springfield staff is working on that right now, so, oh, there we go.
I just wanted to have her available in case she had any additional staff comments if it came to her turn. There's Amber.
Thank you, and I'm, Amber Bell, planning director. Jared Bowder, senior planner, has been leading this project on the county side of review. And he was unable to make it this evening, but I have no additional comments, but I'm available. Thanks.
All right, I don't see any other questions from, from the county. All right, so these proposed amendments to the Springfield Development Code have been initiated by the property owner. Staff has provided a response to, to, to testimony from the previous public hearing on April 21st. We're going to now hear any additional testimony on this item. And as I call your cards, please state your name and mailing address for the record. I do have the applicant here, so we're going to call the applicant first. And, and as they're walking up, well, most people have three minutes in this particular kind of, of hearing. They have an untimed round, so we'll turn it over to the applicant here. Please state your name and mailing address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Andre Phelps. I'm with Andre Phelps Law. My address is 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 204 Eugene, Oregon. I'm here with Teresa Abisho, Abisho Consulting. We've sat here a few times on this topic, and so we really don't have much to add tonight. We just want to be available for any questions you may have. And in, I think really the only, what the question that you had, Counselor Weber, just to get to that. So it is true that originally, our client, Haas International, we did come to the city trying to sort of fix the issues that they were having with their property. But we went through multiple iterations with staff, trying to get to some sort of solution. And really, how we feel is that this is a win-win situation. We've really, really done this sort of very small, it originally felt like a very small change, right? Just affecting one or two properties. But really trying to help the viability of this area in general, because it is underdeveloped. So that's kind of where we're coming from. So we just want to be here to be available for anything you have to ask.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Great, oh, just want to make sure that you get to read our letter, that we, that we, our latest letter, that page 104. It's just a few, few pages long, and it's not to address some of the issues that came up at the last hearing. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Chris McAllister. Hey, Chris, get you underneath the microphone.
Yep, dear members of the commission and city council, my name is Chris McAllister. I live in Ward III off of 21st. I'm proud to be a Springfield resident, and I will support anything that makes Springfield grow. As this is a combined meeting where we look at providing, supporting business, one of the biggest complaints is me as a vendor in this community is working with our unhoused and our opportunity centers. Apparently Siri's talking to me as well, my apologies, looking at my notes. I would like to just ask, as we look at motivating, motivating business and supporting our industrial areas and our business campuses, that we look at offsetting every application that we do with opportunity for locals. A lot of times, these contracts bring in outside vendors, outside providers, and we still have a lot of crime and issues that are unresolved in our joint area. As someone who helped with the guesthouse issue, we saw some of the same issues that affected Royal Caribbean at the Gateway Guest House. And so we had to deal with a lot of the copper mining, a lot of the stealing, a lot of the crime, and even dead bodies found. As we look at progressing our area, either we need to have, as a caveat of these changes, more enforcement with our deputies, a collaboration with our local police force, or opportunities for people to be safely, so we can protect those who are not involved in these crimes from being blamed with the crimes that often are used by extremists who want to shut down social services in this community. I really care about Springfield growing, I'm Springfield born and raised. I was born on a wing that doesn't exist in our new hospital, because we done reforms. But that said, I really feel as a longtime and forever resident of Springfield that we need to account for not just the businesses that come and go. Royal Caribbean left us very quickly after it got all the promises it needed to. And yes, it's paying its rents, but our people have still suffered. Over 15 of the people who used to work for them are in my homeless shelters or have been through my processes. So how do we stop the next rendition of business before people from creating these issues? So if we're going to be actually supporting our entire community, and we're trying to bring business back to Springfield to help Springfield grow, like what we've done in the past with some of our other campuses and our other regional areas, and as we deal with annexation of Springfield into county lands, how do we jointly, as a community, actually support people in having longevity? We cannot raise rates, we cannot give higher pay if we're still having to pay higher taxes to deal with the people who have been forgotten despite being generations Springfield. I appreciate your time, I appreciate this consideration, and I please implore you to think not just of our strongest, but also of our weakest. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any more cards for this item.
Can I interrupt real quick? I just want to make sure that, Mr. McAllister, that your address, mailing address is on the comment card. That needs to be provided, because this is a land use hearing, and I noticed you didn't state it in your. Okay, thanks.
I've got it.
Got it, thanks.
Do we have any hands online?
Apparently no hands online for this item.
Okay, is there any staff response for the testimony? All right, or any applicant response for the, for the testimony? I see them nodding, no. Okay, this, this is the time for the council and the board to ask clarifying questions of staff, the applicant, or persons who have testified. Is there something that the council or board would like more information about? Any questions before we close the hearing and begin deliberations? I've seen the county there. All right, are there any objections for either the city council or Board of County Commissioners closing the public hearing? I don't see any on the city council's side, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
Lane County Board of Commissioners, any objection to closing the hearing? Seeing head nods to the negative, the public hearing is now closed.
Are there any changes the council or board would like to make to the proposed amendments or finding effect? We're moving right along here. So in Springfield's case, that we're going to bring back the ordinance for adoption as, as written, or as written on June 2nd, but I believe that's going to get rescheduled to the 16th. But that's.
I'll need to check with the clerk and verify on that, is that correct, Allison? That's fine, we can do that. It also doesn't need to be announced by Springfield County Council, it can come back.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also direct the county staff to bring back the ordinance for adoption as written and bring it back for adoption on June 10th of 2025. And the county is open to voting on a motion on this item at present. Commissioner Farr, would you help me out, please?
Thank you, Chair Lovell. My motion states June 24th, so June 10th is the correct date.
I'm assuming that the county would read that for deliberations on the 24th, and the city would read it on the 10th, is what I understand.
I, and Amber has her hand raised, looks like you dropped it, okay. Thank you, Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, please.
Turn on the mic off. There you go, you're on.
I, okay, also I don't hold it, I just push it. I was the opposite.
This is high tech over here.
Can we get uniform mics in this camp, please? Okay, I, Chair, I move, move to approve the third reading and tentatively approve the ordinance number 2503 as presented, instead of fourth reading and deliberations for June 24th, 2025.
Thank you, do I have a second to that? Looks like Commissioner Buck seconded that with lip sync audio there, is that correct, Commissioner Buck? Thank you very much, he's nodding your head. So I have a motion moved by Commissioner Farr to move and approve the third reading, tentatively approve ordinance number 2503 as presented, instead of fourth reading and deliberations for June 24th, 2025, seconded by Commissioner Trigger. This will be a roll call vote, and I would like to ask our council, Bovette, to announce the roll call, please.
Just clarification, Chair, it was Commissioner Buck who seconded.
Yes, that's what I said. Did I say that? Nope, I said Commissioner Trigger, my mistake, Commissioner Buck. Maybe it was the mute button on there that we didn't catch, thank you very much.
Analysis on record correctly.
Yes.
So for the vote, Commissioner Trigger.
Trigger votes yes.
Commissioner Buck. Oh, no, we'll come back, hopefully she'll come back. Commissioner Farr.
Aye.
Vice Chair Senega is excused. Chair Lovell.
Aye.
Oh, can we just wait a moment and see if?
He's signing me back on, it looks like.
Yeah, see if Commissioner Buck wouldn't get her vote on the record. Just pause for a second. Darn, we were right there.
Plugging right along.
Just the argument we need for better bandwidth in the rural parts of our county?
We have made the argument. And I just want to make sure somebody at City Staff is watching the attendee.
Yes, they are, and they are watching, and we're continuing to pause for station identification.
Okay, great, thanks.
I know, right? If we wait too long, Council of that, we could do a quorum of 3-0 with one excused and one on technical difficulty.
Yeah, yes, indeed, if we could maybe just give another minute, that'd still like.
Sure, no worries.
Get, get her on, on record if, if we can. But yes, that would work.
Shouldn't we have a second to vote? Interesting to have a second.
I'd also be happy to call her and put her on speakerphone from my phone if that is an acceptable way for her to cast a vote. I'm asking for that, I guess.
Yeah, that would work as well.
Let me try just ringing her real quick and see if she picks up.
Great suggestion, Commissioner Trigger, thank you.
Okay, I have Commissioner Buck on the line.
Great, Commissioner Buck, did you hear the motion in the second before technology got to you?
I did second the motion, so yes.
That's right, okay, so I'll just call for your vote.
Yes.
All right, we've got four O and one excused, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Council of that, appreciate it. Thank you again, Commissioner Trigger, for that rescue there, good work.
All right. Chair, and I want to just thank the county commissioners for joining us this evening. Anytime you guys want to come over and visit, come on over, enjoy having you.
The snacks are good, I hear here.
All right, yeah, I'm going to adjourn the Springfield City Council JEO meeting.
And I'd like to adjourn the meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners, it's now adjourned, thank you.
Call the, I do that at least once a meeting. I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with a roll call. Mayor Van Gordon, here. Counselor Weber?
Here.
Counselor Mo?
Here.
Counselor Rodley?
Here.
Counselor Blackwell?
Here.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
And Counselor Stout?
Here, thank you.
Please join me with the Board of Regents. Or two, two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings in business for the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the front of the City Council chambers and turn them into the city recorder. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer in which to speak at either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers, and then anyone who has raised their virtual hand, first item, please. Mayor, you have four proclamations under Springfield Uffite. The first one is 2025 Building Safety Month Proclamation. All right, I packed a stack of them this evening. You traditionally May is, there's a lot of recognition for the great work that public employees in this community do. What we're going to do is we're going to go through a couple of them. I'm going to read them all, so we're not, you know, I've already exceeded my steps for the evening, so then we'll, we'll hand out the proclamations. And because we've got a group of folks here, I'm going to pause in between each proclamation and give the council, if they wish to add anything, please do so. And I think this year we're going to, since we've got so many, so many staff here, I'm going to bite the council down and we'll take one giant picture at the end of it. Sound like a plan? All right, nobody's objecting yet. It's Public Works first.
Is it? I thought it was Buildings First, no?
Well, they stacked them that way, hang on. This is the Building Safety Month Proclamation, and I will read an abridged version of each of these proclamations. Whereas our city, City of Springfield, Oregon is committed to the recognition that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential roles of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure, and they play both, both in everyday life and when disaster strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up community, make up our community is achieved through the devotion of guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and other people in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of our buildings. Whereas game on is the theme of Building Safety Month 2025 and encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance to Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider a commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in their community. I, Sean Van Gordon, Mayor of Springfield, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 is Building Safety Month. Do you put these in a convenient order for me on an agenda? All right, edit. I know, we've got to pack a helmet for everybody. Note to self, get Council Doyle a helmet next year, too. So National Public Works Week is from May 18th to May 24th, 2025. Whereas public professional, public works professionals focus on infrastructures, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of Springfield. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Springfield to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our respective communities. And whereas this year marks, this year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. I, Sean Van Gordon, Mayor of Springfield, do hereby designate the week, May 18th through 2024th, as National Public Works Week, and I urge all of our community members to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our development and public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize their substantial contributions they make to protecting this community. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I do this every year with help from Neil. When I was first elected onto council, I was gifted a public works hat because it's one of my passion areas. That's not to say that I'm, I'm for safe buildings, I'm for bicycles, I'm for SPD. Every year I say SPD has yet to give me a hat, but I have such a deep appreciation. It's one of the things that drove me to getting involved. All of the work that we do, whether it's just the everyday public works that keep the streets clean, or our public works department is also part of our emergency services team. When things like, you know, ice storms happen, our public works folks are out there around the clock. So I just do a little extra because I adore our public works team and all the work that they do. And thank you all for indulging me yet again.
I too just want to give a shout out. I've been working in public works for over 10 years now in a different municipality, and I am always amazed at the amount of work that, that makes our cities run. And I think a lot of people don't realize, because you just flush your toilet and it just works, right? And you don't think about the pipes that are under the ground and the work that goes into making that stuff work. And so I have nothing but the utmost appreciation for our public works folks, so thank you.
And before I switch, I just want to recognize the public works folks. I mean, the, public works is our, really our community backbone. It's our, you know, the skeletal system of this community. And it really doesn't work without the hard work that public works does out there every single day. And they do it quietly and they do it diligently, and they really are one of our first responders, so thank you. This is for National Law Enforcement Week for May 11th through 17th, 2025. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including and dedicated, including the dedicated members of the Springfield Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 2,400 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the law of duty, line of duty. And whereas the names of these, of these servants are on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty is honored on the National Law Enforcement's Memorial Fund 37th candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2025. And whereas May 15th, 2025 is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all, all of our officers and their families, and US flags are flown at half-staff. I, Sean Van Gordon, Mayor of Springfield, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Law Enforcement Week in the City of Springfield and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and our communities across the country.
I, I feel like I cannot pick a favorite child, but, so I just want to say that I deeply appreciate the work of Springfield Police Department and our law enforcement officers. And the work that we have done in the last several years to grow the force and diversify the force. And we have our new interim chief who has been with us for a few years as the deputy chief. And it has been a true partnership and the work that they've been doing in the community. And so I'm very grateful that you all have come along and worked with us as a council and worked with our administrative staff. So I'm very proud of the work that we've done in Springfield and very proud of our, our police officers here, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Blackwell.
I don't have a cool hat, but I just want to say that I'm glad you're getting recognized today, and I appreciate all of you every day, thank you.
There's like a theme of hats going on here. We really appreciate all the work you guys have done the last couple of years. It's been some of the most important work that's happened at the city. And, you know, and I'm always grateful to see, see this proclamation come across my desk and it's really privileged to give it. All right, so that May is also Bike Month. So whereas the bicycle is an economic, healthy, and convenient form of transportation, an excellent tool for the enjoyment of Springfield scenic beauty. And whereas throughout the month of May, residents can experience the joy of biking and support the local economy by biking to nearby shopping and dining. And whereas the bicycle industry, sales, and bicycle tourism contribute to at least $440 million and $400 million respectively in Oregon's economy annually and generates 7,000 jobs. And whereas the city of Springfield and safe routes to schools are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety in an effort to improve health and safety for everybody on the street. I, Sean Van Gordon, the Mayor of Springfield, do hereby proclaim May 2025 is Bike Month in Springfield, Oregon. And I challenge Springfield residents to get out and ride on our regional paths or visit local businesses by bike during the month of May. Six now.
I just want to say that the coolest possible hat that any of us can wear is a helmet while we're riding our bicycles as presented, prevented more concussions than not, so. And also want to recognize the great work that our Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee do, and they do a lot of work, especially with various rides and various community events. They've been having one, I think, on Wednesday. So there's a tremendous amount of, I think, excitement around continuing to make Springfield more bike-friendly, so thank you.
All right, before we come down and take a picture, I just want to reiterate to the staff that are in the room, really, our heartfelt thank you. Your contributions to this community are really critical and are really important, and we couldn't do what we, we do without you. And we really appreciate the work and the commitment to this, this great cause, the city of Springfield. So what we're going to do is I'm going to get the council to come down with us. We're going to do something a little bit different because we have four proclamations, that's it. And then Mike's going to take a picture. So if you're getting a proclamation, we're going to do it one big photo. All right, thank you everybody for your patience with that, next item, please. Next item is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar, second.
Will you call the vote, please? Yes, Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Mo?
Yes.
Counsel Rodley?
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell?
Yes.
Counsel Doyle?
Aye.
And Counsel Stout?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please. Next item is public hearings, you have one public hearing this evening. It is the wastewater and stormwater user fees for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and this has a motion.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Matt Statter, Environmental Services Director for Springfield. As you know, each year council considers user fees for both the regional MWC wastewater fees and the local wastewater and stormwater fees set by the City of Springfield. On April 14th, we came to you at a work session and got feedback, presented options for your consideration, and we took that, the feedback and incorporated it for tonight's public hearing. If you approve the fees proposed for fiscal year 25, 26, we will have adequate revenue to continue to operate and maintain our systems, deliver our services to residents, fund our capital improvement program, meet our environmental regulatory requirements, and ensure protection of the public health and the local environment. For you tonight for public hearing is a local stormwater increase, wastewater, stroke stormwater rate increase of 3% 52 cents a month on an average bill, a local wastewater increase of 5% as discussed on the 14th. of 5% as discussed on the 14th, $1.37 a month. And then the regional MWC wastewater increase was 5%, which is $1.60 per month. That regional increase, I'll note, was forwarded to the cities after a public hearing that MWC had on April 11th. So I'm available to answer any questions you might have, but at this time, I would request you hold the public hearing and consider adoption of the resolution to set user rates that will go into effect July 1, 2025.
Counsel Rodley.
Thank you. This is not a question, and it's not really necessarily directed at you. It's just really more of my telegraphing. When we did have this conversation and work session, I think I was a lone vote for the lower amount. And so when, for folks who are here, so when we make this vote, I will not be voting in the affirmative because I really do think that in this current economic climate, people are being hit really hard and incomes are not going up. And while I absolutely understand not falling behind and I absolutely support us continuing to, to have fees to pay for these, I just would rather we do it at a lower rate during this time. So I just want everybody to know that I'm not against any of it. I just am for the lower rate and not the higher fee. So, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I have one card. It's Chris McAllister.
Dear Council, my name is Chris McAllister. I live in Ward Three. I also participate in the Budget Committee for the Springfield Utility Board, and I've been honored to serve as Chair for multiple years. I've been looking at how we try and deal with our changes, our needs, our upgrades, dealing with microplastics, dealing with emergencies such as our winter strategies and our winter emergencies. And I look at what is in the city's purview and what is in subs, our Springfield Utility Board's purview. And I feel like if we're going to raise fees for the Springfield side of things, that the city of Springfield needs to help out and do more. I feel like there's a lot that are tied into these fees that don't necessarily reflect the burden that's held by the lower income and people living in multi-unit facilities. There's often not enough access to, to warm water and also water flow. A lot of times when there are issues with repairs, it's put into the private sector, which is especially right after the ice storm, we're so backed up that some people did not get repairs for months afterwards. Some people are still not in their original homes since the ice storm happened, and we need to really account for that. And so whereas part of it is subs responsibility, to which I take responsibility for on my part as a voting member of that body, I ask that you take responsibility and show that there's more that we're getting out of these dollars with every dollar spent. In light of my Counselor Corey Rodley's comments, I do agree that these are hard times and that we need to do better. I do not support an increase in these fees. I respect, I do request that we get more accountability from our city government and our, and our works to make sure that we have better systems. Perhaps we start to install some of the situations that sub is having to go outsource or go through other contracts for, or that we do collective bargaining and actually make Team Springfield a team. And so that said, I am opposed to more further increases as we just raised the rates. And we've raised the rates every year I've been here. And so the municipal one is the waste storm, the storm wastewater is one of the hardest ones to justify for our local residents, especially when water that is from other people's situations wind up taking a lot and it's not countable. If there's a leak, we still have to pay because it's counted on our meter. And so if we have to wait until a problem gets fixed, it's still counted on our meter. And so I just ask for you to be mindful, or if you're going to accept the rates, that you go with a lower rate, not a higher rate. I yield. Thank you.
Chris, before you go, could you just clarify one thing?
Yes, sir.
Are you speaking for the Springfield Utility Board?
No, I am here. As I put on my card, I put, I represent self. And I just wanted to share my lived experience because in the past I've been asked, why do I know?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other cards for this item. Neil, do we have anybody?
No hands.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
I move to adopt a resolution of the City of Springfield setting local and regional wastewater sewer user fees and local stormwater drainage user fees as set forth in the Springfield Municipal Code.
I will second.
All right. Please.
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
No.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
A motion passes, five yeses, one no. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
Okay, I have a couple of cards. First card, Chris McAllister.
Good evening, dear Council. My name is Chris McAllister, and I come before this council as a former homeless youth here in Springfield. I ask for Springfield accountability. Couple of years ago, the governor issued a executive order to try and hold our entire state responsible for helping find solutions for our displaced seniors, our displaced children, our people of color, our people of different orientations who have been abandoned, especially in more recent times, by governance systems. We chose to not be, according to official record, under what's called the MAC group, the multi-agency collaboration, to not take part in the county's process. And as such, we do not have an allocation for Springfielders who live in Springfield. We often have this reputation of, or this, I guess, myth of Eugenians coming to Springfield to take advantage of our services, when actually our Springfielders have to go last of line, sometimes even to Cottage Grove to get services. We are a city of peers. We are a city that is a charter city in a charter county. If the state does not meet our needs, we need to meet our needs. If our county does not meet our needs, we need to meet our needs. And as such, where do our queer people go when they are hurt out in Thurston? Where do our people who have been trapped in a broken down RV with nowhere to go and are pushed to Eugene on video by our police? I am a proud Springfielder. I support our government when it does right, and I try to speak truth to power when we do not meet our goals. And as such, I watch thousands of people go in and out of shelter beds that don't qualify for them, that are not meeting their needs, do not meet their education levels, do not meet their language needs. And I am told that we are held accountable only by what the statute says. I have proven three times that our local government has not read the state executive orders. We take the voice of somebody who's paid to do their job, and then we run with it instead of checking the data, reading it and seeing how does it apply to the Springfield lens? As someone who is, I'll be 41 in June, as someone who was born in this city, I have seen a lot of change. I've seen a lot of growth and I've seen a lot of harm. There'll be 43 dead people that I have seen in the last four years from the Eugene-Springfield area, of which 19 of them were Springfielders. I have the ashes of seven of them because I don't have anywhere to put them. They died in my care. They died when I had to go because of a sports game out to Junction City to get their, the remains. So I ask, as the accountable oversight of our unelected government, as the accountable oversight of our police department, of our judicial system, that y'all ask more questions, that you do more for the people who were born here, and that you hold a moment of silence at some point, and maybe even have a homeless healthcare, homeless safety appreciation month or awareness month. Thank you for your time.
Jason Bowman.
Hello? Good evening, Mayor Van Gordon, City Manager, City Council, Police Department, Fire Department, Karma Collectors. My name is Jason Bowman, Ward Two. I would like to designate this month and the rest of the year and for the remaining of our existence as Human Safety Month. I would like to bring awareness to traumatic brain injuries. I would hope that law enforcement could get the training that was needed so that way no other persons could be injured. We all appreciate the Bill of Rights and the Constitution. There comes a time when the blind man takes your hand and says, don't you see? Springfield Lane County, Cascadia, ducks, the water is merkled, there is no merit in Merrick. Faith is seeing your heart, not your eyes. Even a blind man can tell you when the sun is not shining. We will not arrest our way out of this. Test me, test me. You will not arrest me again or anyone else for exercising First Amendment rights granted under the Constitution of the United States. Ben William, Ben, Brittany Williamson, Pacific Source, SPD, EPD, City of Springfield, Lane County, Oregon. Keep secrets keep people sick. Let it be known as no secret that someone directed these actions. Which politicians directed this assault? Who is responsible for this human trafficking assault? Deliberate injury? How many sheriffs are involved? How many co-conspirators? Hands off. These officers spent more time playing with guns than the academy than studying the Constitution. ORS 161.233, Fourth Amendment, standard of reasonableness. Crisis intervention, de-escalation, GTFOH, 1-16-00, DOJ, policy of use of force. You tarnish the badge, pack your belongings. The stock of Lane County sits in chattel. How do you rig a housing market? Ethical concerns for Ben Miller and his entire community. Jay McAlpine does not honor the Constitution. This is a coordinated effort, a community effort. Sarah Kosky, unhoused CCS board member, bum Oregon advocate, yeah, right. Commissioner's Office, Business Leader, Poverty, alleviation, Officer-Age, Homeless and Poverty Task Force, Taking Human Rights? We pass. Special Ops, show us the budget, show us the money, audit. Elkhorn Hot Springs and Lodge, Measure 11, yeah, right. The obstruction needs to end today. You are all involved in a criminal enterprise, hiding the egregious civil rights violations? These need to end today.
Thank you. Your time's up. Allison Hunter.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councillors, City Manager, and Commissioners, if they're still here. My name is Allison Hunter. I live in Ward Two, having moved back to the Lamont Valley a little over two years ago, I believe, and living in Springfield for a little over a year. X marks the spot where Eugene-Springfield Fire, the gateway, the gatekeeping, special operations seems to intersect. Finally, I am still here to raise the alarm. After being forcibly removed from Peace Health Sacred Heart River Bend ER on 3/8/23, while not receiving the cares I was directed there to get, I have continued to experience chaos coordination in my medical care and other areas. After my shoulder was broken on City of Eugene Community Supported Shelters Empire Pond on 1/17/24, where I was not provided ADA accommodations, the chaos was escalated even more. A Eugene police officer threatened to break my windows and tow our car in a parking spot as a disabled vehicle while AAA was en route to jump my vehicle. On 3/6/24, when my husband went inside Pacific Source to submit a written statement about the medical abuse of me, a disabled cerebral ruptured cerebral aneurysm survivor, multiple traumatic brain injury survivor, Springfield Police delivered on the promise that the Eugene Police made. Gateway to gatekeeping. The officers hurt us on purpose, misrepresenting us as resisting. One of them refused to answer when asked what agency he was with and for his badge number. After destroying our property and assaulting us, they trafficked us through McKenzie Will Lamont Hospital, the same officers who hurt us, gatekeeping our medical care, a federal crime. Gatekeeping our medical further while held hostage in their jail, inappropriate medical care well sourced. One of those officers admitted on his own camera to obstructing. We believe him and we believe it's a clubbing affair with many key players and associations. Likely unions are heavily invested. That officer went on to hurt me further on purpose, right after turning his body camera off when leaving the ER room, clearly a real pro. My phone was interfered with while they had us kidnapped. Our second set of keys has never, ever been returned. Many games have been played by far too many, including attorneys with those keys. Exclusion, suppression, omission, falsification, and obstructions as if they are sporting events. Our mail has had much interference both in Eugene and Springfield. Our mailbox at our current residence has been locked for almost three months. It seems it will take an act of Congress to get USPS Shelter Care and Emerald Property Management, and I'm guessing the county or whomever, to allow us to receive mail unmolested at our residence. Please also investigate the special operations budget for Eugene-Springfield Fire EMS. They seem to be cashing in on unhinged bets. Trauma by way of law enforcement and medical care is unconstitutional. Please see your way to actually be addressing these matters and report it to the appropriate agencies and agents. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Curtis Blankenship, Ward Three. I've paid taxes in Lane County since 1985, property taxes, and I have a degree in sustainable design. What I wanted to talk to you about is the zombie properties here in Glenwood. There's about eight abandoned building or empty commercial spaces in Glenwood. And there's, right now, there's a glut on commercial property. You know, LA and San Diego, there's like a 30% glut. You guys have like about a 20% glut of commercial properties vacancies that, you know, because people are doing things online, these commercial properties are, there's much more vacancies. And so what I'm proposing is give, especially these buildings in Glenwood, give them a tax break if they are, let them be used for temporary shelter for the, for the homeless. You know, you can put on-demand water heaters in there and incinerating toilets for just a temporary shelter. Also, I'd like to see them turned into live-work spaces. That, that whole area would be perfect for live-work spaces. You know, the developers in this town, my father was a loan officer for home savings and loan in the seventies, and he loaned out on tracts of homes. And what he told me is developers will do whatever you want them to do. They don't care what they're developing. So here would be, it would be very expensive to convert those properties into live-work spaces, but there, there was some, there's something that the developers could do in this town, creating jobs. The, you know, it's, it's affecting my sale, my property values and your tax revenue goes down when, I've been coming here since 1985, that area's always been bad. You know, what do you think investors think when they drive through that area in, in this town? Keating, I talked to Keating about zombie properties over in Eugene, and he talked about taxing a non-use, creating a non-use tax. So kind of a carrot and stick approach to this. I'm saying give them a tax break and then tax them if they're not going to fix them up. You know, in capitalism, you cannot just do whatever you want with your property. That's not what, what property ownership is about. You can't just do whatever you want. And like I say, investors, you have to have an eye for the rest of the community. When you own a piece of property, you are part of another community. You can't just let that thing just go into disrepair and do whatever you want with it. And if, nothing else, you know, manifest destiny, we have a use for that property, okay? You're not using it. We have a viable use for that property for homeless people and to keep, keep property values where they're supposed to be. So, yeah, convert these zombie properties into temp, at least temporary space for homeless and eventually live-work spaces and get all our property values and your tax revenue up. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards. Do we have anybody online?
No hands for this item.
Is there any counsel response? Counsel Rodley.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out and sharing your concerns and your ideas. I appreciate it. I appreciate the diversity of thought that is happening, and I just want to thank you for taking time to come out on a Monday night.
Counsel Doyle.
I just wanted to comment to the last speaker that we had here in talking about Glenwood. I'm not sure if you've been following the comprehensive plan and what's happening with the Springfield economic development. the Springfield Economic Development Agency, but that's something that I would highly recommend that you look into. There's a lot going on in that area that you may not be aware of that's happening with zone changing, with development and that sort of thing. It's really moving forward in a very positive manner that hasn't happened in a lot of years. And so we do also have meetings that you can attend as well. So I highly recommend getting involved because it sounds like you've got some good ideas.
Anybody else? Curtis, I wanted to say thank you for coming. I know you've got a couple of questions. If you could put them down into an email and send them, that would be helpful. I think there's probably like three different conversations that are happening. I don't want to try, like, I don't want to try to answer them without at least kind of trying to detangle them a little bit. All right, next item, please.
The next item is under ordinances. Ordinance number one is Kiev Street Name Change. This is the second reading. This is ordinance number one, an ordinance renaming Kiev Street, K I E V, in the Uke Village subdivision to Kiev Street, K Y I V, as platted and recorded in Book Seventy-three, page ninety-eight and ninety-nine. Flat records of Lane County, Oregon, and Township Seventeen South, range three west of the Willamette Meridian. And Tom Severs is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I am Tom Severs with the Current Planning Section. Tonight, we have the second reading of the Kiev Street Name Change, an ordinance up for adoption to rename Kiev Street to the proper geographic spelling of the Ukrainian capital. One change was made to the report to reflect that the recommended condition be removed because the city has agreed to pay for the sign that is going to replace the old one. That is the only change that was made. No further testimony was received, and I yield back to the council.
Any comments or questions before we take a motion? All right, Counsel Weber.
I move to adopt ordinance number one. Second.
You call the vote, please.
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. And before we go to the next item, I, we have a, a little bit of a gift for you guys. Public Works made it for you guys. Well, I will bring it down for you. You can take it away. It is the concept sign that they have to work through it. So it is a little bit of a sample sign, but they wanted to make sure that the, oh.
Mayor, may we take a moment to invite the Kiev neighbor, neighbors to come and take a photo with you?
The cities of Springfield and Eugene commenced the preparation of this plan about a year ago, and that process has included an extensive process, including data analysis and community input and consultation to identify housing homelessness and community development needs and to establish priorities, strategies, and performance goals to address those needs using HUD funds. As you may recall, I presented the draft, the draft plan to council during work session back in January. This is the same plan, but now I am coming to you with a resolution for adoption. Your packet tonight includes a copy of the resolution, an executive summary, as well as a summary of public participation efforts, including the agencies interviewed, surveyed, as well as public comments received. So once approved by HUD, the new consolidated plan will go into effect beginning July one twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth twenty thirty. Thank you.
Get to get a motion. This is a substantial amount of work. And so, yeah, thank you for doing all the work, and I know that Eugene staff was involved as well, and please provide our thanks to them as well.
I move to adopt resolution number one. Second.
You call the vote, please.
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Any business from the city council?
Counsel Stout.
I had the opportunity to speak to a group of ten middle schoolers this last week, and they wanted me to come speak to them as a, an elected official. And I've been, and I was clear, I hadn't been on the council for very long, but it was an hour and a half, which no one wants to hear me talking at someone for an hour and a half. So we, what I chose to do was host a very nice city council workshop, and so we did a mock city council. And I just wanted to say it was extremely successful, and I felt like the kids actually got something out of it. So if anyone is interested, I'd be happy to share my outline and what I designed so that you, we can continue to engage more youths in, in really getting some hands-on experience with this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just had one quick request for the city manager. The, we've been talking about North Gateway for a long time, and when I think about the questions people have about North Gateway, I think it's back to this question about strategy and vision and what our, and what our vision as a council and a community are. And I'd like us to schedule probably a fall work session and just kind of go through some of these issues and start to get our arms around some of these bigger questions that are, that are behind what we're seeing out of North Gateway.
Mayor, we can certainly do that. We will put that on for probably September. That work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item under business from the city managers. Item number one, ratification of the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission, M W M C, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, Regional Wastewater Program Budget and Capital Improvements Program, C I P. Matt Stouter is here for this item.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm here speaking to you on behalf of the M W M C as the Executive Officer for the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission. Let's see here, I have some talking points. I'm going to deviate them from them slightly to try to be a little briefer. It's been a long evening for you. As you know, our intergovernmental agreement that created M W M C provides for Springfield, Lane County, and Eugene to ratify the M W M C's budget. And so we're here tonight to ask for you to do that for our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget and C I P. Much of the detail, if you want the detail, I can give you, I can answer questions, and there is detail provided in the presentation that you may have already seen or will watch for the Budget Committee presentations. On April eleventh, M W M C approved the regional budget and C I P and directed staff to forward it to the governing bodies. They held three work sessions to discuss the budget and then a public hearing prior to taking action, action to adopt. It does include that five percent rate adjustment that we talked about previously. And as you know, in accordance with the I G A, Springfield does all the administrative work for M W M C, the capital construction, financing, project delivery, that sort of thing. Eugene does the operations and maintenance. So quickly, high-level budget summary. The regional budget will allow us to continue to operate and maintain our existing facilities and infrastructure, provide service to about two hundred and seventy-five thousand people. That's the service area for M W M C. Implement our key, the commission's key outcomes and performance indicators, deliver our capital program, and then meet our regulatory requirements. And I will note to the point previously with the rates, almost everything we do is driven by mandate, environmental mandates, and one of the things our commission takes very seriously is how we spend that money and how we, how we actually deliver those services. So with that, for example, we have a twenty-seven point six million dollar operating budget this year. There's an eight and a half percent increase in that operating budget over last year. That's, there's seven point six percent increase on the personnel services side. It's a purse hit for us. We don't have any employees. We contract with Eugene and Springfield. However, the obligations that are carried by Eugene and Springfield are then passed to M W M C, so we're paying for that. There was a large hit there. Then we have obviously healthcare costs and those sorts of things. We have, we saw a nineteen point six percent increase in our M and S, and that's our indirect rates that we pay to the cities. Our chemical costs have went up substantially, chemical costs to run the facility and treat the wastewater, and then our utility costs have increased substantially as well. And if you're wondering how we can do an eight and a half percent budget increase and only a five percent rate adjustment, we have some creative ways that we do that, but we look, we look to our reserves. We have additional revenues that we get in addition to user fees for like our renewable natural gas project, that type of thing. I'll note that our capital budget this year is ninety-eight million dollars for some large projects to improve water quality. We have a substantial upgrade to our ration basins. We have improvements to our administration building, which is relocating and rehousing our entire operations console and facility, and we have facility planning work. So that's the high-level summary of the budget. We're here before you tonight to ask for you to ratify it. We'll be to Eugene on Monday, May thirteenth, and we'll be, or May twelfth, excuse me, and we'll be to the Board of County Commissioners on May thirteenth. Finally, we'll bring it back to the commission for final adoption.
Questions? Before I take the motion, thanks for bringing the question about rates up, Matt. I don't think that was pointed specifically at M W M C. There's just like, you know, after several years of high inflation, there's just a lot of economic sort of uncertainty and stress that is out there in the world, and I think that I would take those as just general comments, and I think it's an opportunity to, you know, just continue to tell the story of how hard people are working to make sure that we meet what our federal mandates are and then, you know, keep rates in a consistent and level as we possibly can.
I appreciate that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Lou Locco for his great work putting together this budget, so thank you, Lou.
I move to ratify the F Y twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six Regional Wastewater Program Budget and Capital Improvement Program, C I P. Second.
You call the vote, please.
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Next item is the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Community Development Block Grant, C D B G Annual Action Plan. Aaron Feifield is here for this item, and this item has two motions.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight with the fiscal year twenty-six C D B G Action Plan. This will be a plan for funding that we will receive and hopefully start spending July one twenty twenty-five. This plan sets the funding allocations for the use of C D B G funds for this next fiscal year. We are estimating that we'll have about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in C D B G funds available. However, the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development has not yet issued Springfield's final entitlement award. The Springfield Council Community Development Advisory Committee has met. They've met twice now, holding two public hearings, most recently on April second. They reviewed a draft plan that was put out for public comment, held the public hearing, and they have issued a recommendation to council on how to allocate funds once those funds are announced. By approving the plan now with direction on how to allocate funds, will give the city flexibility to submit our action plan quickly once the award is finalized. I will say this was direction we received from HUD to do a number of years ago, knowing that they were late in getting the announcement out this year, or in previous years. I will say as part of the discussion with the C D A C, we reviewed a number of existing C D B G funded programs from prior years. Those are spelled out in your packet or summarized in your packet. I don't need to go through all of them, but I will say the two pieces that we're seeing consistent demand for, that we continue to see demand for, are the city's home repair program that is funding to help low-income, very low-income homeowners address health, safety, and accessibility needs, repairs, maintenance in their home. And the second is social service funding through Lane County Human Services Division. So you can see through the C D A C's recommendation on, in the Attachment One, Council Briefing Memo, page three, and I'll just, I'll just review what the recommendation states. Sort of once we know what the allocation is, so there's sort of four parts to the recommendation. One, provide the maximum award amount of fifteen percent of entitlement funds and available program income to the Lane County Human Services Division for social service funding for low-income residents in Springfield. Provide the maximum amount, award amount of twenty percent of entitlement funds and available program income toward grant administration and planning costs. Award the remaining amount of funds to the home repair program, up to four hundred thousand dollars, and if there are any remaining funds, leave those unallocated for future discussion of those needs. I will say the draft allocation that's in your packet that you'll see, again, estimating five hundred and seventy-five thousand, does follow that recommendation. So if you were curious, what does that recommendation look like? If we receive five hundred, it's spelled out in the packet, Attachment Two, page six. So happy to answer your, answer questions.
So I just wanted to point out in the six points that are on there, number six, which is improve low-income neighborhoods, Counselor Picianari and I made it very clear that that was a priority and that that's been a priority for Springfield to help with causes of slum and blight in our community. We've, we've brought that up more than once, and this is probably the second year. And so I'm, I'm very disappointed that that once again is just being pushed to the side. So we're helping people in these communities take care of their, like these So we're helping people in these communities take care of their, like, these, these fixes, like Band-Aids, but we keep them in a community where all they see is blight and slum around them. And how are we helping lift people up when they live in that type of a community? We need to be fixing those sidewalks. We need to be, you know, doing something to improve the livability of those communities. And so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm really disappointed that once again, that has just sort of been like not addressed as it has been requested to be addressed.
Counsel Ramon.
Thank you. Um, and I know we had this conversation before, and I'm not going to be a blocker on this, but I, I do think that we're missing an opportunity to be more strategic. I know that, you know, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars doesn't, in, in the whole big scheme of things, doesn't seem like a ton. However, um, I, I just think that there's, there's more opportunity for us to be strategic around it, whether it is investing in infrastructure in lower-income neighborhoods, which I completely agree is something we need to do. Um, I am a big fan of the homeownership assistance. I was just talking to someone this past week about how important those programs were for them when they purchased their first house in Springfield. So, I understand that we are under a time crunch. I understand that we're, all the things. And I just, I, I just sort of hate that we're putting it in this, all in one bucket. I do appreciate that we're giving as much as we possibly can to the Human Services Commission, but I would love it if we would somehow get to a more strategic conversation about this, um, moving forward. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel Mo.
Been following these programs very closely that Aaron has been a part of, and uh, gee, doing a great job. I'm concerned on a, a big picture, federal money coming down is gonna be pulled out or changed on us. Not gonna get it. So, uh, she's aware of that. She's spoken to that. So we're gonna watch that. And as much as we can, spend it the best we can for the people. And within, within the group that's been talking about this, they've discussed all these different options that you guys have talked about. And they're doing the best they can to make recommendations for us, so, I agree with them.
Counsel Doyle.
Well, the thing is, is that it is a recommendation board, and yet we are the ones ultimately should have that decision. And we're not, they're not making recommendations based on what we're saying that we want. So that's, that's the part that I'm concerned about.
That's, that's, I guess that's sort of true, but they give it to us, and then, and then we, hopefully we agree with it, maybe we don't.
So, one of the, um, one of, one of the thoughts I have, I, I think Counsel Doyle's points uh, really nuanced and important here. But I, but when I think about it, you know, I think about the transportation requests that we've made that are coming out of a, kind of a different bucket, and maybe we've got to figure out a way to put it together for everybody. This may not be a CDBG conversation, but when, when I think about low-income neighborhoods, right? The, our, our legislative priorities has, have about three million dollars in asks for sidewalks, ADA enhancements. That bond has got, you know, is touching low-income neighborhoods as well, and I could probably think of, you know, the, the, the tree platform and, uh, you know, a couple of, and some of the sidewalk uh improvements we voted for. So maybe, maybe the right answer here is that we take that question away, and if we can maybe get a list of other stuff that we are doing that speaks to specifically that. I know that this is coming from, you know, uh, this effort around CDBG, but like, I, I think we're also answering it with a lot of other work that we are, we are doing around, around the bend. And then, the other question that I have, right, because I kind of hear the frustration on, uh, you know, across, across the panel is, how do we get more of our general guidance and advice to the committee that's doing, you know, doing this work? In a way to help guide them about what we want in the, in, in the, in, in the outcome, so that we don't get to this point next year, and we go, well, this is a, this is the question that we have every single year, and may, and maybe that is your question, Aaron, which is, so, like, is, we, we're, we're trying to give feedback. We're not doing a very good job in that. Like, how do we close that loop with everybody so that we, you know, we kind of get more, more nuanced and more clear, clear recommendations from the committee and give them better, better guidance?
Great. Um, and we haven't talked in detail, but we've certainly brought up the strategic conversation is top of mind. I think when I came previously, it was sort of like, I think we are in this time crunch that I am gonna bring something to you for fiscal year twenty-six, but would love to have the strategic conversation this fall in however we feel makes the most sense. Um, sort of setting, setting up for fiscal year twenty-seven.
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate that, and I know that we've been in a rush since the end of COVID. And I think the thing that, you know, I'm looking at, uh, you know, the city manager for is, for help to get out of this place where we're running from strategic crunch to, you know, crunch, you know, time crunch to time crunch, but instead get, you know, more broadly, you know, uh, kind of, this is a program. I mean, back on track like we're doing it wrong, but back more, more, more of a strategic approach for the following year.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to talk with, with staff internally about some, some of the ideas that I'm hearing from you and council this evening. I think that, um, the Community Development Block Grant process, I'm familiar with that on the county side as well as cities, and it is fairly prescribed from HUD. But I think, um, what you're getting is a larger, like you said, more nuanced conversation about how do we really address these conditions of blight in Springfield and help lift our residents um in that way? And there's a lot of ways that we can look at that, and so that's, I think that's a, uh, cross-departmental response with, um, the city manager's office, obviously, um, Community Development Division, and, you know, potentially even our partners in Team Springfield. So, um, you know, I, I could see a multitude of ways that we could approach this, and I'd probably want to, uh, bring that back to council leadership and potentially back to the full council. But I would also like to say your dance card is full until the end of the fiscal year. So I just want to kind of put that gentle reminder out there.
I move to approve the Community Development Advisory Committee's recommendation on allocating funding for the Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Second.
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
No.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Answers, five yeses, one no. Next item, oh, we have two motions.
Second motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute all documents needed to give effect to the city's agreement with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for these funds.
Second.
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is award contract to Corvallis Neighborhood Housing Services, DBA, Dev Northwest, Springfield's office. Um, Jeff Pascal's here for this item, and again, there are two motions for this.
Good evening. Thank you again, uh, for letting me come up here and speak to you, Mayor, Council. Um, so, I just want to address before you move to the motions, a couple of the comments and questions from last week when you saw this uh, contract in work session. Just to verify that went back with staff, verified the eighty percent versus sixty percent area median income. That eighty percent is provided by Dev Northwest, so that's what's in the contract, and that is what's correct. Um, the other language in the scope of work has also been finished, so that missing language. Um, one other question that came up was a discussion about the disburse method. Is this reimbursement, or is this just lump sum? Um, one thing that is not prescriptive in the Department of, um, from DAS, and we'll remember their acronym, but one thing that isn't prescribed is that, um, how we disperse the funds. And so, from a staffing efficiency perspective, we were just going to, once the contracts executed, disperse all of the funds, and then they're required to turn in their quarterly, um, report to, so we can verify how they've spent it. Are they on track to spend it, and make sure those, um, those, that the costs are appropriate? Um, and so, those are really the main issues. Um, I think there was another question on the remaining funds that we're holding back for affordable homeownership. Um, and one of the properties referenced is Fifty-Second Street. Staff, housing staff currently is preparing a request for proposal. Um, and so, uh, council will have another opportunity as to where they would like to place that hundred thousand, the Fifty-Second Street project or property as just an idea of a potential place where council can use those funds to help a project along.
Any questions?
I move to approve a contract with a not-to-exceed budget of five hundred thousand dollars to support the development of affordable housing at one ninety South Forty-first Street and one five seven seven Laura Street locations in Springfield, Oregon.
Second.
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next motion.
Uh, you have, next motion? It's the two motions and eight forty-five at night.
So, I authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents to carry out the grant agreement with Dev Northwest.
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley. Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle. And Counsel Stout.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
No further business, thank you.
Any business from the city attorney?
No business.
Hey, thank you, everybody. I know it was a pretty late night, but I appreciate it. Have a good night. We are adjourned.